For which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. I'd like to thank Dennett Principal, Peter Veneto, and Julie Guterson, and the rest of the custodial staff for setting up everything tonight for us. We'll be holding a special town meeting tonight. You should have received a mailed copy of the town warrant and had a chance to review it, and if you need one, the tellers have copies at the desk. Tonight's meeting is being taped for broadcast by Area 58 Community Access Media. Please silence all cell phones, and by that I mean, if you think you've silenced them, take them out now and double-check, please. I'll wait. You want me to be louder? Okay. That's not usually my problem. All right, thank you. Present tonight, we have on your right, the Board of Selectmen. John Traynor, Mark Russo, Chairwoman Christine Joy, have our Town Administrator, Liz Dennehy, Town Council, Greg Corbo, and Town Clerk, Trish Detterman. To your left, we have the Finance Committee. We have Michael Lemieux, Catherine Shepard, Marilyn Brown, Steve Lewis, and Chairman Nate Sides, and your Town Accountant, Barbara You are checked in tonight by our tellers, Nancy Magnussen and Pat Muscataris. Our Peace Officer tonight is Fred Glynn. Several of our officials are not residents of the town, and as such, need your permission to address the Assembly if they're asked to. I will entertain a motion that will allow the following individuals to participate tonight, when and if appropriate. Town Administrator Elizabeth Dennehy, Town Council Greg Corbo, Town Accountant Barbara Gomes, Town Assessor Wendy Jones, Animal Control Officer Brian Kling, Council on Aging Director Joy Marble, Interim Chief of Police Matt Clancy, and the Council on Aging Outreach Worker James Muscataris. Sorry. So, I would like a motion, I'll entertain a motion, so move second it. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Counters unanimously. Are there any people in the audience who are not registered voters in Plimpton? Okay. Anyone who is not a registered voter needs to be sitting in one of these first two rows with the sign that says "Non-Voting Member." These are the procedural rules I will be following as your moderator. All motions must be seconded. No motion is in order until it has a second. Only after being recognized by me, the moderator, may a member address the meeting. After making a motion, an article sponsor will be allowed up to three minutes for a presentation. You don't need to use that a lot at full-time. Speakers from the floor will be allowed up to three minutes on the first round of discussion on an article, and up to two minutes on a second round. A speaker from the floor who wishes to address the meeting for a second time on an article must wait until persons who have not yet spoken have had their turn. Should you tire of a debate, you may offer the motion, "I move the question." So, for those of you who might be new, that's a request to end all debate and to move directly to a vote. To do that, you would need to be recognized by the moderator, and the question you want to move must be mentioned, and at that point, we will proceed from there. It would require a second. It would require a two-thirds vote to do that. That is, to have it moved from the floor, and it can't be debated, amended, or reconsidered. Unless there is a compelling circumstance, I will not authorize a motion for reconsideration or rescission of a previously voted motion. I will weigh the significant circumstance, the importance of the article, the quantity and quality of any debate we've had on it, and the margin of the earlier vote. We've only a short list of articles for tonight. To help us work through this, it would be best if we observe a few rules. Please stand when speaking, state your name and your full street address. If you're unable to stand comfortably, we'll bring a microphone to you. I would ask all speakers to please use the center microphone, so that everyone can hear you. It's especially important, because this is being taped and played on cable. Please direct all comments through me, the moderator, and I will direct them to the appropriate person. Please keep all questions and comments to the motion at hand. If proposing any substantial amendment, it must be submitted in writing. Some of tonight's articles are very lengthy. Since everyone has access to a copy of the warrant with the full text, I will entertain a motion now that the moderator dispense with reading the full articles, and read only the synopses of the articles as printed in the warrant. Do I have a motion? A second? Can I have a show of hands for all those in favor? Down hands, all opposed? It passes unanimously. We've come here as friends and neighbors. We will be leaving here as neighbors, and hopefully still as friends. I have been reminded, well, I've always carried with me a copy of the letter George Washington put on the Constitution when they returned it after the convention, and in it, he states that there were compromises made. Not everybody was happy with what was, some states got what they wanted, some didn't. Some didn't get what they wanted, and others did. It was all trade-off in order to get things done as a community, and I'd like us to keep that in mind tonight, please. With that, we move to the first article. Article One. "To see if the town will vote to amend the Plimpton zoning bylaws by striking the existing Section 6.10 that regulates solar facilities and replacing it with a new and substantially revised Section 6.10 regulating solar energy facilities," and the text of the new bylaw follows that. Do I have a motion to talk about this?
Good evening. Ann Sobleski, 255 Main Street, Chair of the Planning Board.
While Ann's working on that, I'll say that this will need a two-thirds vote, because it's a bylaw, and because it is a bylaw, motion, warrant article, the Planning Board needs to have held a hearing on it, and needs to present the results of that hearing.
Do you want the report of the Planning Board first, or the motion first?
The motion first, please.
Okay. I move that the town vote to approve Article One as set forth in the warrant with the following change: to strike Section 6.10.6.2.2 as stated in the warrant, and replace it with Section 6.10.2.2 of the proposed solar energy facilities bylaw by deleting the first sentence and editing the section to read, "The use of native pollinator-friendly plants is encouraged." Period. Mowing or the use of pervious pavers or geotextile materials underneath the solar energy system is the preferred method of vegetation control." Period. And then otherwise, the remainder of the text that is as printed in the warrant.
Do you have that in writing, for any chance?
I do.
May I have it, please?
And I'll explain what that is.
And we're having a little trouble hearing at the mic, so maybe you have to get real close to it if you're speaking at the mic. Now, do we need to act on this motion and then to amend it? That's our main motion, okay. So, the main motion is, to make sure everyone's clear, to adopt the bylaw that's in your warrant with this change, that Section 6.10.2.2 be amended. I'm sorry, 6.10.2.2.
This is six.
Oh, it's not in here, there isn't. I know, but not in here, there isn't. Page 10. Section 6.10.6.2.2. Thank you. By deleting the first sentence and editing the section to read, "The use of native pollinator-friendly plants is encouraged." Period. Mowing or the use of pervious pavers or geotextile materials underneath the solar energy system is the preferred method of vegetation control. Ann?
So, that's the motion. The explanation for the change is originally--
Ma'am, we get a little closer. It's hard, it's still kind of hard to hear. It's okay.
Originally, the text prohibited herbicides, and upon consultation with Town Council, that could have a negative effect if a facility was on an agricultural property, and so it has been revised to eliminate the prohibition of herbicides, and instead to say that that particular sentence is encouraging native pollinator-friendly plants and promoting the use of pervious pavers underneath the panels. That's the change. Otherwise, the motion is to approve the amended solar bylaw text as is printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second? Second. Open for discussion. Oh, we have to have the Planning Board report first. Sorry, Ann.
That's fine. So, the Planning Board held a public hearing, properly noticed and published, on the 12th of November to discuss these proposed bylaw changes. The bylaw changes were developed through a group of people who, including some members of the Planning Board and other members of the community, who met after the original Planning Board public hearing for the proposed zoning bylaw changes to this article that were set out last May for the main town meeting, and were passed over, because there was not a consensus that that was an appropriate method of going about how to amend this. So, a working group was proposed. They met numerous times and really evaluated our bylaw. Those members were present at the Planning Board hearing, gave a presentation. Members of the public were available to provide comment, if they had any. We had one written submission. In general, the comments were favorable, and at the conclusion of our public meeting on these changes, the Planning Board voted for in favor with one abstention to recommend them to the town meeting and to support this article. Our abstention, who probably can comment, did not think these changes were necessarily strong enough. It wasn't that it was too strong, it was not strong enough. So, one of the things that people may not be aware of, the original bylaw was taken as a model bylaw from the state and just adopted wholesale into our zoning bylaw, and the model bylaw from the state was designed to really encourage large-scale ground-mounted solar energy facilities. This is an attempt to tailor that bylaw, rework it, make it more protective and more beneficial for the town. I can tell you, the only thing that the Planning Board has done, since I have been Chair as of this past May, is look at enormous, large-scale solar energy facilities being installed in Plimpton, one after the other, after the other. They don't stop. There's lots of deforestation associated with them, and the way the bylaw is currently written, there is literally very little that we can do, other than to require a bond and to require landscaping, which may or may not be adequate. So, for all of those reasons, the Planning Board voted to recommend this bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. First, next speaker? Name and address, please.
Michelle Yanis, 392 Main Street.
Yes.
610. Sorry. I'm slow, but I get there. H. and J. H., waiver of documents. The Planning Board may waiver any information requirements it deems to be necessary to the review of a particular plan. I think I was appalled at that. If you are going to make Joe Smith hand in required documents, plans, maps with specific colors, then I think you should make John Toll also do that. I don't see how a waiver makes it look appropriate. That's one. J. Constructive approval, failure by the Planning Board to file its written decision within said 90 days or extended time. That also appalled me. If the Planning Board were to draft some paperwork and print it and hand it to the Town Administrator to go over the date, so they don't miss their deadline, then we don't have to live with something as a butters of something we feel offended by or have questions about. Those are my suggestions. Like I said, it looks inappropriate. A lot of the solar companies that are coming in today, I don't know if people realize, that Borrego's project plan manager was on our Planning Board. His name is Jack. He lives on Ring Road. It makes it look inappropriate not to require documents of all required documents from each person, not separate, because you don't think it's necessary. The other part, I think somebody should be accountable for 90 days if that's the date they're supposed to have it in, and if the Planning Board is unable to do that, perhaps the Town Administrator could. Those are just my ideas and things that upset me. Thank you.
Thank you. So, those were some suggestions, not an outright question about anything. If the Planning Board wants to address that, they're free to. If not, go on.
Thank you.
Yes.
We don't have a motion on the floor yet?
Yes, Ann made a motion on the article.
Was second?
Yeah, I was seconded.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
I'll answer those questions or comments, and then I'm going to open the floor to Linda, who was on the Subcommittee, who wants to give a general overview of the bylaw, but just briefly, keep in mind that what this does is this is amending what exists in the bylaw as it currently stands, and the language concerning constructive approval is actually, I believe, a shorter time period in the bylaw as it currently stands, and the waiver requirement is also currently in the bylaw as it is. The reason for the waiver, it's a discretionary waiver. It doesn't say the Planning Board is required to grant any waiver. However, it does afford discretion in certain unique circumstances if there was a requirement that isn't really applicable, and so an example of that is for the new big facility that's being proposed on a very large piece of land that's 800 feet away from all of the abutting property lines. Well, one of the requirements is that you include a plan that locates where the well and the septic system is on abutting properties. Well, if your facility is already more than 800 feet away from them, there's no wetland bylaw requirement that would be triggered. There's no setback requirement that would be triggered, so in an instance like that, if someone asks for a waiver, we could consider them not having to go out onto every abutters piece of property, ask their permission, and locate their well and their septic, because it really doesn't make a difference. But again, it doesn't require us to give waivers. It allows them to be considered, and there are certain members of the Planning Board that are adamantly opposed to giving any waivers as well. So, it's there. But now, Linda.
Linda Letty, 44 West Street. As Ann mentioned, we had an active Subcommittee to develop this over the summer, and one of my colleagues that worked on it with us is Amy Cronin. I'd like to acknowledge her. She hoped to be here tonight. She's just coming through a knee operation, and this wasn't the best place to be right now. But, and John Schmidt is here from the Planning Board, and he was the chairman of the Subcommittee. So, John may be wanting to be supplementing some things that I'm going to be saying right now. But what we're trying to do here is to bring the model bylaw that we adopted about seven or eight years ago that was from the state to be more suitable to Plimpton. As Ann mentioned, the model bylaw from 2011 or 2012 that the state put out had very few parameters in it that the town could fill in. We sort of took it as a blank slate. We added in the sort of setbacks from the neighboring houses and so on, but that's why, right now, we have a lot of solar development going on in Plimpton. Many other towns, either at that time or since then, have had special town meetings to update and put particulars in, so that they had a suitable solar array coming into their town that really suited what they wanted. In our case, we've had many projects over the last six years. Some started out in the old gravel pit in the industrial park, and some now, more recently, are getting into more residential areas. And that's caused, I'm on the Conservation Commission, and we've seen more concern as a result of that from neighbors and people who are interested in the character of the town, which has been consistently expressed through the open space surveys, is the number one concern is keeping Plimpton's character rural. And our other equally important was concerned was to support our local farmers. Farming and cranberries are composed, more than one-third of the landmass in this town, and we all benefit from it in terms of the open space it brings and what they bring to the character of the town. And so, what we've done in trying to draft this is to find a middle road between the basic bylaw that we have right now and one that would be more extreme and shut many things down. So, this is trying very much to stay in the middle. The problem that we had in drafting is that we looked at over two dozen other towns, mostly smaller ones, and towns of all sizes. Most of them have different zoning areas, so they have residential zoning, industrial zoning, commercial zoning, and that makes it much easier to locate things. We don't have that. 95% of our town is in one zone. So, what this does is try to take the result of having zoning and get to it by expressing what we want on the land. So, as a result, we have set aside acreage that's suitable for different sizes that I'll summarize in a minute, and then we set some principles in place. One of the principles is there's been a great concern about forest clearing. People hate to see too many forests cut down. This, I can say parenthetically, is a huge issue in central and western Mass and the solar projects that are being developed out there, but it's been somewhat of a concern here, too. So, what we're proposing now, that in the size of the projects, no more than 10% of the acreage on that project can be used to, as to be converted, to some extent, from forest to clearcutting.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Linda. I realize it's a huge article that most of the warrant, but I do want to try to keep to the time. I let you go a little over. If you want to wrap up, that's--
Give me a two-- Yeah, so we limited the forest cutting, and we also made sure that the land that's going to be used for bogs has been cleared for five years or more. So, if you put those two together, that gives some guarantees that the rural landscape as it exists is going to be used, and yet it still can be used by the people who own the cleared land, but there won't be extensive forest clearcutting. So, other than that, the size parameters are in the project, and we'll be glad to, you know, answer any questions about them.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak on the article? Do I have, I need a motion to call for a vote, or do I just call for it? Okay, we have a motion and a second. By seeing no more people wanting to discuss this, I will call for a vote. Remember, it will require a two-thirds majority to pass, because it's a bylaw change. All those in favor of Article One, please raise your right hand. All opposed? I declare a two-thirds majority. The article passes. Article Two's in here somewhere. Article Two. "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the Massachusetts General Court for special legislation as set forth below to exempt Matthew M. Clancy from Section 91 of Chapter 32 of the General Laws, so that the Board of Selectmen can appoint him to the position of Police Chief, provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill, unless the Board of Selectmen approve amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, and provided further that the Board of Selectmen is hereby authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objective of this petition." And I'm not going to read, this is one of those long ones, I'm not going to read the whole thing off. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to move the article as printed in the warrant.
And a second. Discussion?
All right. Mr. Moderator, Christine Joy, 10 Dukes Brook Road. Matthew Clancy is uniquely qualified to serve as our Chief of Police, and it is the town's best interest to secure his services. As a former Plimpton Chief of Police for eight years, he has extensive knowledge of our community. As a former Director of our Emergency Management Team, he has extensive knowledge of our unique challenges we face in emergency situations. He has extensive experience in managing the break-in period of a new police facility. He has extensive experience developing startup budgets for new facilities. He has extensive experience in developing policies and procedures for effective management of personnel and operations. He has extensive experience in managing department technology. Matthew Clancy is able to further the Selectmen's goal of continued professionalism of town operations by leading the Police Department to attainment of state certification and professional development of the current staff, in the hopes that our future chief will come from within the department. Most of these are self-evident, but on the state certification, what this is, it's a standard of professionalism and transparency that reflects favorably on our department in the law enforcement community and the Commonwealth's legal system. The Selectmen unanimously support this article. The Police Association have shared their support of this article, and now we ask the town to support this article, so we can pursue the necessary legislation, so that we can appoint Matt Clancy as our Chief of Police.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on this article? In that case, the article has been moved and seconded. I'll call for a vote. This is a simple majority vote. All in favor of accepting Article Two, please raise your right hand. All opposed? The motion passes. The article passes. Article Three. "To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 90, Section 18B, which would allow the Board of Selectmen to establish designated safety zones on or at or near any way in town, which is not a state highway, without Massachusetts Department of Transportation approval, or with Massachusetts Department of Transportation approval, if the same as a state highway. Such safety zones shall be posted as having a speed limit of 20 miles per hour or take any other action relative thereto." It was recommended by the Board of Selectmen to, oh, and they're the sponsor. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Would you like to speak to the article, Mr. Russo?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, the origin of this article arose out of concern for a particularly, a particular potentially dangerous intersection in town. When we started looking at options, building a new island, or straightening the road, or putting in a roundabout were possibilities, all pretty expensive, literally hundreds of thousands of dollars. We considered another option, which was changing the speed limit, and as we explored that, we found that Department of Transportation regulations-- that, we found that Department of Transportation regulations really limit the discretion of town officials concerning speed limits, and speed limits are really based on traffic studies and commage usage, even though local knowledge might suggest that the limits that are imposed are not safe. So we confronted kind of a frustrating challenge with no ideal solutions. Furtuitously, through some persistence and particularly some help with town council, we found a mass general law that does allow the Board of Selectmen the opportunity, if approved by town meeting, to create these safety zones with a 20 mile an hour speed limit. So this offers an easy, inexpensive fix for some safety problems rather than major reconstruction. If this article passes, it merely gives the Board of Selectmen authority to make this designation. The Board envisions, if we are given this authority, that we'd seek significant input from town residents and particularly people near any intersection before we took any action. So basically, at this point, it's good to have this tool. We don't know whether we would necessarily use it, but just another tool for us as we go about planning and particularly working to promote safety.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak to the article?
Mark Wallace, 98 Mayflower Road. Just a quick question. Does this have any adverse effect on state funding on any of the highways if you change the speed limit?
So please direct your questions through me, and I'll pass them.
I'm looking at you.
But we've got it.
I'm sorry.
Would you like to answer that?
I'm not aware of any effect that would happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no hands, we have a motion in a second on Article Three. "To accept provisions of Massachusetts state law to allow the Selectmen to set up safety zones and speed limits pertinent to that." All in favor of Article Three, please raise your right hand. Downhands. All opposed? The article passes. Article Four. "To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $12,501 to pay the required 20% match to purchase and equip an eight-passenger accessible van for the Council on Aging upon receipt of a Massachusetts Department of Transportation grant or take any other action relative thereto." Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion, move that the town will vote to transfer from the general stabilization account the sum of $12,501 to pay the required 20% match to purchase and equip an eight-passenger wheelchair-accessible van for the Council on Aging upon receipt of a Massachusetts Department of Transportation grant.
I have a motion in a second. Now, since this is a request to take this money from general stabilization, we're going to require a two-thirds vote for that. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Since this article was written, we have received the grant. The grant is for $62,800. The 20% of $12,501 is our share of paying for it. The problem we have today with the van we have for Council on Aging is that it is not wheelchair-accessible, and we have many seniors in town that are in wheelchairs, and unfortunately, we can't transport them. This will give us the ability to be able to put two wheelchair -- wheelchairs in the van. It's equipped for that, and it carries eight ambulatory people. So we think this is a very good move, and we would like your support.
And I was asked to add before the meeting that the Finance Committee has had time to examine this article, and they voted five to zero to support this article. Does anyone wish to speak to it? Yes.
Hi, Art Moore in 11 Granville Baker Way. What is going to be done with the present minivan that we have? Does this mean we'll have two? And does it mean we'll have to hire another driver?
Would you like to answer that, John?
First of all, I should have introduced myself. John Trainor, 62 Crescent Street.
I already introduced you tonight, John. Is that okay?
Yeah. The present thinking is, right now, we will have about a 30-day overlap. We also have a sedan that came from the police department. One of the things we're looking at, would it make sense to give up the sedan and use the existing van because it would allow us to transport more than, you know, things like wheelchairs that are collapsible, et cetera? So we were going to have a meeting with the Finance Committee to get their input and make sure everybody was in sync how we go forward. Obviously, we would work this with the Council on Aging, too.
Okay, so the short answer is we'll be keeping them both, probably?
So the short answer is we expect to get rid of one vehicle, but it may not be the present van.
Okay, now, how about additional drivers?
Again, I don't want to have a side conversation. You need to come this way. What about additional drivers?
So right now?
I know it seems silly, but you've all been at town meetings where this can be a problem, so I'm trying to do it by the book.
Right now, we have one person who is paid. We also have one person who has been volunteering. We expect to go forward. We'd like to see more volunteers, obviously. So we have -- no decision has been made whether there be a hiring, and I think it would have to go through the whole budget cycle that we're about to start for the year. I'm not sure we could afford it.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Does anyone else wish to speak to this? Yes.
Mr. Moderator, Steve Silva, Pope's Farm, also the fire chief. Just a little housekeeping point on Article Four. As it's written right now, eight-passenger accessible van, can we insert the word wheelchair-accessible van just so there is no confusion on what it is used for?
I didn't read it. Wheelchair is not written here. Oh, you did. Okay, so John read it in his actual motion.
I'm just going by the published one.
I understand. Thank you, Steve.
On point. Thank you.
So yes, it will be a wheelchair-accessible van. Thank you. Okay. Yes?
Yeah, Joy Marble, Council on Aging Director, non-resident. I'm just addressing the first thing about the current van that we have right now. We do have a volunteer who drives long distances for medical and non-medical appointments and stuff like that. We'd like to see if we can somehow come up with the cost of accommodating that van with insurance and all that kind of stuff. Looking into wrapping the van with advertisement. We have money coming in as far as charging for the rides and that sort of thing. But then, the other thing is that, you know, we have the other van, and most Council on Aging's do charge for their rides. And if you go outside of the Council on Aging and outside of insurance, the van rides cost crazy money. So it is very much needed, not just for handicap -- not just for seniors, but for handicap residents.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no hands, we have a motion in a second for Article Four. "To transfer from general stabilization account the sum of $12,501 to pay for the required 20% match to purchase and equip an eight-passenger accessible van -- a wheelchair-accessible van, thank you, for the Council on Aging upon receipt of Massachusetts Department of Transportation grant." All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Downhands. All opposed. The motion carries unanimously. Article Five. This is another long one that I'm going to read the beginning of. "To see if the town will vote to amend the Plimpton general bylaws, Article 21, rules and regulations relative to the control of dogs in Plimpton." Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, Alan Weelock, 10 Center Street, and also Chairman of the Bylaw Review Committee. I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Do you wish to speak to this, or?
Although this is sponsored by the Bylaw Review Committee, we did this on behalf of Brian, our new animal control officer who is a non-resident. So I believe Brian wants to speak to this.
And Brian was on the list tonight that you approved to speak tonight, so we'll hear from the animal control officer. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Very nice suit.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Brian Kling, Animal Control Officer.
Yes.
I'm a non-resident. In November's -- on November 7, 2018, the Commonwealth amended Mass General Laws 14173, which address the penalties for violations of dog control bylaws. The only modifications were for the fines. They amended the fines. The first offense went to 50, second to 100, third to 300, and fourth or subsequent offenses were $500. The key to this was the last sentence, which says, "Note that individual municipalities can establish different fines as long as they are not lower than the fines stated above." I went through our bylaws, found that our fines were lower. I updated them to match the Commonwealth's fines, and those are the only amendments.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak to this article?
Mr. Moderator?
State your name and address, please.
Ethan Stiles, 85 West Street.
Thank you.
I have a question about the wording of Section 10, the first large paragraph, and the last paragraph on the page. And in one of the sentences, Section 10 says, "The Selectmen may, after the hearing, may make such order concerning the restraint," and then it's crossed out the words "muzzling," "silencing," "removing," or "disposing," and then it goes back to disposing of such dog as authorized by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 141, Section 157. Now, if you look down further on the page, after it says C, it says, "All dogs must be muzzled or restrained within 12 hours of issuance of such order." My issue here is that if you've removed the power of the Selectmen to order the muzzling of the animal, if above, why do you still retain the word "muzzled" below? Restraint is still in the article as written, but muzzled has been crossed out in one place but retained in another. So I'd like some clarification whether that was deliberate or if that was card-bark.
Thank you. Would the animal control officer like to address that, please?
Mr. Moderator, Brian Kling, Animal Control Officer. The only thing I could say to that is that's not one of the modifications that I made that may have already been in the bylaws as written.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Okay. Town Council would like to address that.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. So with respect to the recommended change, prior to the most recent amendments to the statute that changed the fine structure, in 2012, the statute was amended to change the way that nuisance and dangerous dogs are referred to. And so when the statute was amended, it uses the words restraint or disposal and then lists a menu of various options that the Selectmen can order if they deem a dog to be a dangerous dog, one of which is muzzling. So the terms restraint and disposal are really broader than what was there before, but a dog can still be ordered to be muzzled under the amended version of the bylaw.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this article?
Yeah. My name's Melissa Lunny, and I live on Maple Street. And I'm curious about the -- what constitutes the nuisance factor in a dog? I know I have dogs that bark. And, you know, they're just a breed that is -- got watch dog, it's a primitive breed, and they do bark. And they irritate me, but not -- I'm concerned about the fees, and is this something that winds up being fined in Plimpton? A lot. I mean, you know, and who's the decider of?
Mr. Kling, would you like to address that, please?
So that would --
Since I've only been the animal control -- sorry, Brian Kling, Animal Control Officer.
Thank you.
I didn't know if you needed to do that.
Not every time.
Since I've only been the animal control officer about a half a year here, I have some experience in the town that I live in, and a lot of these go to Selectmen's hearings as far as the deciding. I may have a voice in that, I may not, but again, when it comes to tonight, the only modifications I made were to the fine structure.
Right. Do -- hold on, please, just hold on. Yes. Town Council would like to address that.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. So as I mentioned before, the statute now gives the authority to -- of the Selectmen to determine if a dog is a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog. The procedure has to start with a complaint from a resident and a request for a public hearing. And the way that the legislature specifically defines nuisance dog is one that "by excessive barking or other disturbance is a source of annoyance to a sick person residing in the vicinity, or by excessive barking, causing damage or other interference, a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment." So it's not a matter of just having a dog that barks once in a while or more than once in a while. It's got to be barking to an extent that it's causing a public nuisance and disturbing the residents around you. And if there is such a situation, a complaint has to be made to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen then has to conduct a public hearing, and if, after such a public hearing, the Board finds that a dog is a nuisance dog, the Board can issue an order requiring that certain conditions be met to prevent the dog from continuing to be a nuisance. If such an order is issued and there's a violation of that order, what the bylaw would then authorize would be for the animal control officer to issue tickets for fines rather than some other type of remedy or in addition to some other type of remedy.
Thank you, Council. Yes.
Ian Sobleski, 255 Main Street. And if I understood the animal control officer, the only issue here with respect to this amendment is the fact that the statute was amended to say that we could not have fines that were less than what was in the statute, and the printed text includes fines that are less. So it's not something that we have the discretion to reduce what's proposed further. The amendment is to make us conform with what we're actually required to have under the statute.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no hands, we have a motion in a second for Article Five. All those in favor, this is just a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Downhands. Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Article Six. "To see if the town will vote to transfer from available overlay surplus fund the sum of $270,000 for the purpose of reducing the fiscal 2020 interim tax rate or take any other action relative thereto."
Mr. Moderator, I move that we pass over Article Six.
I have a motion to pass over. Do I have a -- I need a second. A second? And a second? All in favor of passing over?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion to pass over carries. Article Seven. "To see if the town will vote to transfer from overlay surplus funds the sum of $20,000 for the purpose of purchasing and installing an update for Assessor's Computer-Assisted Mass Appraisal, KAMA, system software, which may include conversion to a new system or take any other action relative thereto. It was not recommended by the Board of Selectmen on a zero-to-two vote, and FinCom advises me they have also had time to consider it, and they do not recommend it at a zero-to-five vote." Do I have a motion?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Speaker. I move that the article be -- the submission is printed, and I'd like to speak to it.
A second? We need a second. Second. Go ahead, please.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Ethan Stiles, 85 West Street. I am the Chairman of the Board of Assessors of the town of Plimpton. And the reason why we brought this article here tonight is we're asking for -- we're asking the town to authorize funding to upgrade our KAMA system. we're asking the town to authorize funding to upgrade our KAMA system. Now, I understand the reluctance of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for discussing money articles at a special town meeting where the attendance is less than it typically is at the annual town meeting, but there are important reasons why we should consider to do this tonight rather than in May when the annual town meeting occurs. Our KAMA system as it currently exists is obsolete, and will need to be upgraded or converted in any event. Now, we have had quotes from the existing vendor, which is Vision, to upgrade our system. And our system isn't-- is required in order for us to assess our property. It's how we-- it's how we put out property record cards and how we enter data into our system. Essentially, we can't work without it. Now, we've received quotes from-- so we have a quote from one company to upgrade or to convert will cost roughly the same amount of money, and that's $20,000. And the $20,000 is not-- it's not something that we need to raise. It's not something we need to raise. The Board of Assessors voted to transfer the money from surplus fund, from overlay, into a fund. So it is available for use now. So it's money that we already have. It's not money that we have to raise inappropriately. And ultimately, the reason why we do-- but that-- but then you ask, why do it now? Why not wait till May? And the one important reason is that we have-- in fiscal 2022, we have what's called revalue year. And revalue year is essentially is a year when all of our-- when all of our values get recertified by the Commonwealth, and every community in Massachusetts has to do it. Now, the last time we did a conversion was in 2014, where we converted from P&amp;K Division. And at that point, there was-- so I've been told it was an absolute nightmare to convert because we had to convert during the revalue year. Now, we are currently in fiscal 2020, and if we were to approve this article tonight and have the funds available to do our conversion or our upgrade, then we would have-- then we would be able to get that done before the revalue year. But if we have to wait till May, there is a considerable chance that we will not have the system in place in time for the revalue year, and things will become very difficult for us to do our jobs and get our values in for that particular year. And that is not so far-- that is not so far away. Now, if you-- some of you may or may not know that fiscal years end-- fiscal 2020 ends in June of 2020, and fiscal year 2021 ends in June of 2021, and fiscal year 2022 ends in June of 22. And it takes us time to actually get the conversion in process. And I've also been informed that of the vendors that have-- we have been looking at-- we've-- the current vendor that we have-- we have two vendors currently that do our system. One that handles real estate and one that handles personal property. And we are looking at quotes that will combine both real estate and personal property to give us the benefit of both of one system and also to decrease the amount that we actually have to pay in terms of maintenance of these systems, since we pay a maintenance fee as well as upgrade fees. So I would suggest that there is a time consideration that I think that many people in the town government who are aware of the difficulties that can happen when trying to get one's values recertified and getting the tax rate approved so that we can send out bills, will appreciate if they are able to have an upgraded KAMA system in place before the revalue year. And that's the reason why we suggest that the town, notwithstanding the disapprovals, vote in favor of this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak to the article?
Good evening, John Schmidt, and I'm Cranberry Knoll. I have a couple of questions for the Finance Committee. What is currently in our overlay surplus?
Our town accountant will answer that for you.
The current amount in the overlay surplus is-- in the surplus is $170,000. In the regular overlay account, we have-- we had about 584. With this out, we'll have $414,000 left in the regular overlay account and $170,000 in the surplus.
Okay. Second question. What is our annual budget?
Bottom line annual--
Plus or minus? Yeah.
About $12 million.
$12 million. As a rule of thumb, what is considered a safe percentage to carry in your surplus? Is it 10 percent or 20 percent?
Usually, we don't carry an overlay surplus that would be available for this year and then close out at the end of the year. What we carry is our allowance for overlay, and it's usually there to cover the amount of outstanding real and personal property taxes that we have on the books for all old years.
Do you anticipate, if this item comes up again in May, would the money, again, come from the surplus? Because it sounds like it's a service we need, and if we delay it, it's just going to cause more confusion down the road.
Well, I don't know that the town accountant can look ahead to May and that she can tell us where this money would come from in May. I think at that time--
But I was just--
the assessors would have to get with the Finance Committee and figure out where best that money could be taken from.
Okay. I just-- it sounds like this is a-- this is a service that the town, the community, needs, and by delaying it five or six months, it's going to make it more difficult to implement in the future.
Understood. Thank you.
I support this.
Mr. Moderator? Speaking on behalf of the Finance Committee, the reason the Finance Committee does not feel that this is an appropriate article to entertain at tonight's town meeting is exactly the fact that we have not had the opportunity to do our due diligence the way we normally would do when an article like this is presented, and that it would include the entertaining of other alternate vendors or other funding opportunities or other considerations that may come up. So that is the primary reason we voted against recommending this article at the special town meeting. We are not necessarily saying that it is an item that is not worthy of funding at a future town meeting, but we feel pretty strongly that this is a type of article that should be entertained at an annual town meeting and not rushed at a special town meeting. Thank you.
Do you wish to speak, sir?
Mr. Moderator, Ken Thompson, 127 Lake Street. You may have spoken to this verbally, but if this document sticks for the record, I believe you said was not recommended by the Board of Selectmen.
Correct.
And yet, the document reads "recommended."
Zero to two.
Right. And so I thought we should correct this document.
Well, the vote of the Board of Selectmen was zero, recommend; two, do not recommend.
Right.
So that's what it says.
It's not recommended, but it says recommended.
We went through this a decade ago as to how the selectmen's votes should go down on here, and this is just tradition of the way we've always done it. I know it can be confusing, but it was also confusing to people when it said, "Not recommended by the Board of Selectmen, two to zero," because then people looked at it and said, "Well, Board of Selectmen voted two to zero for this." I understand where you're coming from. The Board of Selectmen do not recommend this, is what this means.
Right. And I was only halfway there until the FinCom just said, "And they not recommended it." And some of the annual warrants, they also not recommend--
They didn't have a chance to vote before this was printed.
However you want the record to read, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the article?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Christine Joy, 10 Dukes Creek Road. The Board of Selectmen did not support this article. It's for many of the reasons that the Finance Committee spoke about. It-- it's not that we don't support the article, but we don't feel it was appropriate to bring to special town meeting, that this needs to be weighed with all the other articles at the annual town meeting in May.
Thank you. Yes, there was another speaker in the back.
John Wilhampson, 255 Main Street. I guess I just-- for you, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to understand if we did this back in 2014 and purchased a new system at that time, and now, six years later, that's obsolete. How often are we going to keep doing this? It seems like we should be going with a vendor that has some lasting ability here. You know, because I--
Thank you.
Because I thought we had just done this. So I'd be interested to understand that, and then what-- you know, what is the-- what do we think is going to be happening going forward, and how long will we get for our money this time?
Thank you. So, and the Board of Assessors going to address this. How often are we going to need this type of software? And what's the way going forward to make sure we always have up-to-date current software? Please take the microphone.
Wendy Jones, assessor. Yes, you're correct. We did a conversion in 2000-- fiscal 2014 to Vision Government Solutions. I don't know that it was the most current at the time, but it was what the town could afford. There have been many versions since then. The version that we're running on is an Oracle platform. We've been told by Vision for two years now, they will no longer support it. So we have to do an upgrade conversion, which is expensive. We would like not to do it in the revalue year, so that's why we're proposing it at a special town meeting for fiscal '21.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question about this? Seeing no hands, we have a motion and a second on the floor for Article Seven to see if the town will vote to transfer from available overlay surplus funds the sum of $20,000 for the purpose of purchasing and installing an update for Assessor's Computer-Assisted Mass Appraisal, KAMA, system software, which may include conversion to a new system or take any other action relative thereto. All in favor of Article Seven, please raise your right hand. Downhands. All opposed? The article does not carry. That brings us to the end of the articles for our special town meeting tonight. I will-- give yourselves a hand. I will entertain a motion. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Raise your right hands. All opposed? Good night. See you all in May. Thank you.